Mr. Rosecrans, would you please start us with the pledge?
Yes, sir. Pledge of the Union. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you please say the prayer?
Yes. Father God, we thank you for this wonderful, wonderful day. We thank you for the opportunity to be here. God, we thank you for your faithfulness in all things, good Lord, even when we're not faithful. God, we ask for your infinite wisdom. We ask for your guidance as we continue through our city council meeting and beyond. God, we ask for your protection here in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Okay.
Anita, roll call, please.
Councilor Lorenz.
Here.
Counselor Segola.
Here.
Counselor Ellathorpe.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
Counselor Johnson will not be present this evening, but a quorum is declared.
Modifications to the agenda?
We need to modify the agenda to add Mike Trujillo under Staff Proposals, Reports, and Actions.
Do we have a second?
Is that a motion?
That was a motion.
That was. I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the agenda to add Mike Trujillo to the Staff Proposals, Reports, and Actions. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Segola.
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Approval of Consent Agenda. Minutes of the regular meeting, May 2nd, 2019. Review and approval of counts payable.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
And I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Ellathorpe.
Aye.
Counselor Segola.
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz.
Aye.
Mayor Becker.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Technology is torn in here, so bear with me. Scheduled appearances. In order to be included on this portion of the agenda, please file appropriate form with a city clerk no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. First one on the list is Logan &amp; Associates.
There we go. Well, good evening. My name's Kyle Logan. I'm the owner of Logan &amp; Associates, your independent auditors, and I am here tonight to present the results of our audit of the city's financial statements for the year ended December 31st, 2018. So you have two documents in front of you. One is the bound financial statements. The other document is what I refer to as the management letter. And so I'll just kind of go through the process that we go through as your auditors in order to audit all the numbers and be here tonight to present the audit. And so we basically perform your audits in two phases. We usually come out in December, near the end, before the year end, and that's where we do a lot of testing of internal controls. We pick samples of checks that are written, payroll samples, utility billing samples, and to verify that, okay, the money that's going out from the city has supporting documentation, has proper approvals, and that employees of the city are being paid the rates that are approved. And then also making sure that utility bills that are being sent out to the residents are based on the rates that have been approved either by the current city council or prior city councils. And so doing that, you know, then gives us a level of comfort to say, okay, the procedures and policies that have been established and put in place are being followed by staff, and then that also allows us to dig farther into the financial records of the city. And so the second phase, that's when we come out. This year, we came out in March, and that's when we really concentrate on the numbers. And we do several things there. We do a lot of analytical-type procedures. We do what we call substantive test procedures, where we drill down on numbers and say, okay, do these make sense? We also send third-party confirmations to outside third parties, you know, for instance, your banks, to make sure that the cash that's reported on the city's financial statements are what the banks say that they have. You know, we also confirm with the county and the state certain revenue streams, your taxes primarily. We also verify the debt with either the bondholders or, in your case, you have in your water and sewer funds the Colorado Water Resources and Power Development Authority to verify that, you know, the payments are being made based on the schedules and that the balances remaining to be paid off are what's reported in the accounting records. So after we do that, then that gives me a level of comfort to sign an opinion and issue an opinion on the financial statements. So all the numbers, all the footnote disclosures in this document, they're responsibility of the city's management. Our responsibility is to audit them and issue an opinion. And so following the table of contents is the Independent Auditor's Report. And on page B at the top, that is the most important paragraph, which is the opinion paragraph of the Independent Auditor's Report. And what it is for 2018, it's an unmodified opinion. That's accounting terms. Lame's terms is it's a clean opinion. So what that tells you as a city council, that tells you that all the numbers in this document, all the footnote disclosures in the financial statements are fairly stated and fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that's the best that you can receive from an independent auditor. Okay? I'll kind of touch on the different areas of the financial statements. There's primarily five areas. Following our Independent Auditor's Report, the management's discussion and analysis. That's kind of a narrative of what happened over the past year. The basic financial statements, which are primarily pages 1 through 10. And that includes the government-wide financial statements on pages 1 and 2, which are similar to how a business financial statements would be presented. And then you have the fund financial statements. The governmental funds are pages 3 through 6. The enterprise funds, your water and sewer funds, are pages 7 through 10. And so that covers the financial statements. Following the financial statements are the footnotes. Accounting standards require certain things to be disclosed in the footnotes, which support some of the numbers in the financial statements. And so that's what primarily pages 11 through 30 are. So that makes up the bulk of your financial statements. And then following the footnotes is what's called the required supplementary information, which is primarily your general fund budget. And so the budget that the council adopted and any revisions are presented there and compared to actual, so that you can see, okay, where are you at based on what you estimated or what you amended your budget to. And then following the RSI are the supplementary schedules, and that's basically all the other funds, their budgetary comparison schedules. And then some of your smaller governmental funds that are what we call non-major. And so they're grouped in the back and summarized and totaled. And then their information is pulled forward to pages 3 through 6. So that kind of gives you an idea of what this document is and what it all encompasses. So I'll talk about some highlights. On page 1, on the government-wide financials, your total assets. And so this includes all governmental funds, and this includes your enterprise funds, your water and sewer funds. So total assets are 19.1 million. Of that, approximately 14 million is your capital assets. And that's basically all equipment, your infrastructure, streets, sidewalks, roads, water and sewer systems. And so that makes up a significant part. Now, the other thing is that you have about 2.7 million in cash and investments. So that's good for a city of your size. Okay? Your liabilities are about 6.3 million. And of that, 6.1 million is long-term debt. So your current liabilities is very minimal, which that's good. We always look at that from an audit standpoint to say, can your assets, your cash primarily, cover your current liabilities? And definitely it can. Okay? Following the assets and liabilities is your net position. That's your equity. That's the town or the city's worth. Okay? And so that is 12.5 million overall. And of that, 8.9 million is what's called investment in capital assets. So it basically takes a piece of your equity and the capital assets that are reported up on assets and offsets them. Okay? However, you have 2.6 million, which is almost equal to your cash and investment balances of unrestricted. That means there's no restrictions on that money. So that's available to go into the next year to be used for purposes, whether it's, you know, capital replacement or improvements or, you know, unforeseen things that come up. So it's not like it's available to just spend willy-nilly, but it's available for you to continue on with the city's operations. Okay? Page 3, this is where the fund financial statements are. The reason I talk about this one, this is where your general fund is reported. And really, your general fund is the main operating fund, except for your water and sewer funds, of the city. That's where pretty much everything goes, all the revenues and a lot of the day-to-day operations of the city. So in that, your assets are 1.3 million. Liabilities are only 64,000, leaving your fund balance of 870,000, which is an increase from the prior year of about 314,000 or 57 percent. And of your fund balance, 761,000 is unrestricted. Again, no external restrictions on that. So it's available for the general fund for future, for the next year, the year that we are in. And if you look at it in terms of your expenditures in that fund, which are on page 5, I believe, you will see that unrestricted would cover about three months of expenses if there was no revenues coming in. So, you know, we always look at that, and that's basically a fourth of the year. Couple of other highlights on the governmental funds. On pages 4 and 2, the sales and use taxes, they went up about 160,000, which is about 10 percent over the prior year. Your expenditures actually went down about 118,000. So again, those two are significant influences on why you had the net income of about over $300,000. So... Then on page 7, the water and sewer funds. Your total assets there, 9.3 million. Liabilities, which includes the long-term debt, is 3.2 million, leaving a net position of right around 6 million. And of that, 4.2 of that is in your water and sewer systems and the infrastructure. But it leaves 1.9 million of unrestricted, again, available for, if need be, you know, future capital improvements as the system gets older and replacements are needed. Okay? So really, your water and sewer funds, from our standpoint, look pretty good. Okay? The revenues for the water and sewer funds are comparable to 2017, which made sense to us. However, your operating expenses decreased from the prior year, leaving a net income of about 395,000, which is about a 7 percent increase in the ending equity of those two funds. So I won't go through the footnotes, but again, the significant things in the footnotes talks about your cash and investments, talks about your capital assets, a little more detail of how they're split out between infrastructure and equipment, vehicles, things like that. Disclosures of your long-term debt. Then other required disclosures, for instance, the required disclosure for Tabor and that. And again, these are all required disclosures by the accounting standards. Okay? So I know I've kind of went, given you a high level of everything. And do you have any questions before I continue on? And the thing is, if you come up with questions after tonight, let Jennifer know, and she can get in touch with me, and we'll get you an answer. Okay? All right, so the next document, the management letter that I refer to. Our professional standards, as your auditors, require us to communicate certain things to you, the city council, the governing board of the city. And so that's what the purpose of this letter is. And it basically tells you what our responsibilities are while we're performing the city's audit. And it also talks about if there were significant changes in the accounting standards or financial policies of the city, if there were changes in significant estimates, if we had any issues while performing the audit. And as I always say, if we had, you would have heard from me before tonight. So that's always a good thing. It's also a letter that we use for best practices when we're testing internal controls and policies and procedures. It also, if there are some weaknesses that we feel need to be addressed, but they're not at high enough level that would change our opinion on the financials, we'll include them here. Now, one thing we did this year is we brought in our IT consultants that we use when we're performing our audits with our clients and had them take a look at things. And I'm happy to say that things look pretty good from the IT standpoint, because they look at, what they do, they look at security and, you know, access to certain different systems of the city. And so as years go, we will probably have them look at different things related to IT. And this year, we had them take a look at the court system. And so that's what I put in on page 3, is some comments there. And again, no significant concerns there as far as, you know, related to our review of the court system. But just, again, some things that best practices, some things to make improvements. And so that's where we talk about, what we talk about here is that, you know, getting the necessary training to, as time goes, to get a better understanding of all the applications and functions available in the court system, because there's a lot it can do. Then also reviewing who has access to the court system, because, you know, there's confidential stuff in there. And so you don't want everybody in the city having access to that. So again, that's one thing we came across is make sure, you know, take a look at that and review it to say, okay, do these people that have this access, is that necessary? Okay? And then also, you know, this, again, we look at it from a financial standpoint and say, okay, are there records specific to the court system that can be generated to help the finance staff and management of the city to better oversee the court reporting as far as from a financial standpoint? And so there are some reports in there that we've come across, that we recommend, you know, that as time goes, those be tweaked and be generated to be used in the month-end reconciling. And so, again, it was a good process to go through. And, you know, next year, we may look at something different. Because I'm a numbers guy. I don't know all this information, technology stuff. And so that's why I bring these people in, to have them take a look at the processes and all the computer stuff. So it really was favorable. So... And finally, in conclusion, you know, I want to thank the people of the city, Jennifer, Forrest, Rob, Anita, because they have the hard part of trying to answer questions and digging for information for us when we're asking questions. And sometimes, you know, it's stuff that's been a year or a year and a half that's happened. So we really appreciate their help, because it does make your audit go very smooth.
Thank you.
And that's all I have. So...
Thank you.
Yeah. Audits are a lot of work, so thank all of you very much.
Okay. Any questions? Anybody have any questions? You did a great job, but...
I was gonna say, thank you.
The people over there and... And you people up here that are putting these policies and procedures in place. It's not me, but yeah. Thank you, though.
Well, and I think it's kind of unusual in this day and age that a city this size can come out on top and come out in the plus side. And that goes to all of you folks in the city that work so hard to save money and pinch pennies and find money where there isn't any. That's, we don't do that, you guys do that. So that's a big thing to me. That's the highlight.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Request from golf course for funds?
I'm wearing a lot of hats tonight. So I'm here tonight on behalf of the golf course. And unfortunately, they couldn't be here tonight because tonight's their first night of golf league. So the board members thought that it was important to be there, and she'll support that way. So they asked if I would be in tonight and request some funds. So as you guys may or may not know, they've been in the works trying to get a grant to buy a mower. And we had to come up, they have to come up and at least buy $1,000 matching funds. They did find a mower in Michigan, roughly $10,000. Unfortunately, we haven't gotten an answer back first day with the grant. It was my understanding that they kind of needed an answer for this by the 18th. But it sounds like maybe something different has happened.
It has. I was gonna let you finish and then throw in my bit.
Okay. So anyways, I will finish. But what they're requesting is that the city give them $10,000 to go ahead and buy a mower from the grant funds. And so in talking with this and talking over with Forrest and kind of where that money would come from, the additional $5,000 would probably have to come from the CTF fund. Now, I know the CTF fund or the Conservation Trust fund is something that was a concern when we were doing the budget, because there's not a lot of money that flows into that every year. We roughly get $45,000, and we do have a healthy fund balance in there. We're projecting at the end of the year, $82,000 now. That's with $121,000 being transferred out to the Parks Department this year. So that's what's gonna be left after that, after that $121,000 is transferred out. So given where we kind of know where the budget is going and everything, if we did that next year, that would be the last year that we could use CTF funds to transfer that $121,000. So just to kind of, from being a finance director and being here as the golf person, you know, that kind of gives you little signs of the story, what would happen with the CTF funds. Obviously, that's going to decrease the fund balance by another $5,000. So that's something that you guys can need to take into consideration is, do you want to tap into those funds? I know through some of the work sessions, we've had some discussions on what the CTF funds can be used for, and there is strict restrictions on there. You have to be very careful of how we allocate those funds and what we use them for. So, but this would definitely involve that.
Okay, so now can I do my piece? Because I'm on the other side of that. I had written a grant for DOLA funds. The council had agreed to put up $5,000, and DOLA would match those funds, and that would give them $10,000 to buy reasonably, in good shape, used Fairway More. And we were turned down on the first round. DOLA had, kind of in the middle of their grant cycle, changed everything unbeknownst to everyone. And of course, me being me, I didn't like that answer. So I redid my grant application and put in some new wording, and I cited exactly what capital funds are within the system. And I've asked them to reexamine that grant and see if they can't find a way to give us the matching funds so that the lawn mower can be purchased and we can move forward. I have talked to Jake this afternoon, and he thought they might be able to put off the mower folks for a few days until we can get an answer from DOLA. We were trying to have a phone conversation with them, a conference call, me and a couple of other people, Sarah Stober and a couple of other people, to see if we couldn't get DOLA to understand the error of their ways. And, but we couldn't get that done today, and we can't get it done tomorrow. So we've put that off until Monday. And hopefully, we can move forward. I don't know if DOLA will do it or not. All they can do is tell me no again. That doesn't hurt too bad. But in the end, if we can get some more money to help the golf course and show them our faith in them and get a mower for them, and we don't have to use our CTF funds. And so with that in mind, I would move we table a decision tonight, council, until we can have a conversation with DOLA and see if there is a possibility that they will give us that additional money. I don't think it's a hard no. I believe, after talking to Sarah Stober, that there is a possibility that they will kind of work with us on that. So that's my motion, is to do that rather than entertain giving them more money or, you know, they had talked about transferring the money that we had already offered them into sprinkler heads, which DOLA cannot match, because that's for maintenance, that's considered maintenance. They, too, have really strict regulations. And I don't want to move those funds yet. Can we wait?
I think that'd be a good idea to wait.
Thank you.
Do they, is that gonna, are they gonna be able to...
So Kathleen, like she said, she was able to visit with Jake, and he thinks they can put that off.
Okay. They won't lose it?
And we'll hold it for us.
Okay.
Right. Right. And if not that mower, there might be another one. You know, there's lots of stuff out there. Wasn't the only mower in existence. And he thought if something happened between now and Monday... And I kind of think we'll have a good feel for what DOLA's gonna do on Monday after we finish talking to Randy. I feel like we'll be able to have an answer for the golf course. I'm not a golfer, and you all know that. But I really want the golf course to stay in existence, and I think it's an important part of Montevista. I also think it needs to have some, a little more public use and some things that involve everyone in the community. But we have to start somewhere, and this is a real small place to start, I think. So hopefully, on Monday, after I've visited with the folks at DOLA, we will have an answer one way or the other. And like I said, all they can do is tell me no again. That's okay.
Well, Kathy, I'm sorry. I found all this out after I...
Yeah, that's okay. I know. You and I were emailing.
Yeah, as long as it's the sixth is the next meeting.
Well, I think we could probably find out before then.
Yeah.
We knew pretty quickly with the first grant application. And DOLA's pretty prompt with their...
Right. And we would need a motion or anything because we already have the $5,000 approved for matching funds.
Okay. So we're just waiting.
So that would take it forward. Yeah. So like she said, we're gonna go ahead and table this until we have a definite answer.
Okay. And it shouldn't be too long. I would say by the middle of next week, we would know one way or the other. So do we need a motion? I moved. And you seconded it?
Oh, we need to second it and vote, sorry.
Right. That's okay.
I will go and second, table it until we...
Just table it until we can, yeah, thank you.
And no discussion.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to table this till 6:00, 6:19.
SLB Fair, request for discounted fees for Sky High rental. Be sure and sign in, Nick, and state your name.
There's your sign in.
Okay, just right on the podium, I guess.
Hey, my name's Nick Malone. I'm the San Luis Valley Board President. Here today to discuss rental agreements on high building. So, we're gonna be able to discount that fee. Last year, we did, we did the same thing. The fee on the form of the fair, as we calculated, it went up to just over $4,000. Previous years, we paid. So, that's a pretty large difference. Fair operates on donations and sponsorship strictly. So, we're, we're on a tight budget. So, I guess that's what I'd like to discuss with you guys. I have, I have a, I have a, I have a, I just want to let you guys know, I know, I know the benefit of 4H, but that puts some numbers to it. That's kind of, that's 4H in general and what it does for kids, we have communities, that's great to the San Luis Valley. Last year, we had 300 kids in 4H, various projects, 300 more kids this year. And of course, with that, with the fair here, Montevista, I believe, has a huge effect. So, we're asking, that's why I'm, 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 um, 2013, there was a study done, shows that there's 400, over 483,000 dollars in the property, just in terms of. And that, a little bit of perspective, I think, last year, our livestock sale, those are what you're, that's a large sale. The large sale, we had six I P, eight sales. Say that the sale had that many members, the fair doesn't actually get that many, that all, that's the kids. We support businesses, we build materials, we support, we support. I'm gonna step back here a little bit and kind of tell the 4H region here that I thought we, 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 we.
Get close to that microphone, please, hon.
question, is anywhere from male, how many, to, to, to. I, her, at there, needs to, so we, I was quite clear about that. I'm, I'm here to talk to people about, you know, the fair. At fair, everybody has a contract, whether it be indoor or outdoor or in an animal. And people who, kids who live themselves as members, have learned so many life principles to leadership. Leadership, responsibility, patience, and persistence, and filter, and those are the contracts that should be life frustrating, and some have. And in, as part of 4H, we also do certain projects, which is back to, maybe with DOLA or Monamisa and Almosa, just activities. And Montevista has quite a few members, and we need some of your facilities, as it is. And so, we also, as, our projects cost so much money, we need it, it's just thousands and thousands of dollars, especially livestock. And we spend all of that money at their local source, they are, and go offs, and like, and be, attack, go off, go off, and even in our projects. And that will go back to your needs, your, in your lives, your needs. So, since we spend all these thousands of dollars, we need to ask that you spare a few, like.
No, but I would like to ask your, the parents to step up and say something, because I know how involved parents are in this program as well.
Yes, as a parent, we support our children that are in 4H because we want to raise our children to be protective citizens. 4H goes beyond the law. It's not just a morgue. It really is about teaching our kids to step up and to increase and take over the roles that we have ourselves. We sit on councils, we, this week, I've gone to more meetings so far. This weekend, I have to, and that's a common occurrence, we are a 4H parent, because we want to have our, give our children the best benefit that we possibly can in supporting them in this project. It does cost a lot, when we, when we're in 4H. But it's a cause for us that we feel is necessary to support those kids. Some of the parents have part-time jobs, just get their kids a pair. And some of the parents can't even afford to drive outside of the valley to do shows, uh, horse shows that are expensive, like two kids with two horses. And so, they train all year, and, and all year, mom, they're waiting for mommy to actually prove their skill, and they're done. And when we get to show, it's not about winning, it's about supporting anybody else. I see children who forgot a riddle, old riddle roll, and they're like, oh my gosh, I can't show them that because other kids, not even asking, they step up, hey, I have an extra. We all carry extra tech. We carry everything I'm sharing because somebody else needs it, because we want to keep kids, we know they're good, and we want to prove ourselves. The second you, you get your name pulled last because you got, or hers, because you got last place, these kids, as soon as the first placement comes out, hugging each other, shaking their hands, and it really teaches our children great school attention and, and supporting each other. So, yes, we definitely ask, and the council, because they're making that be quite not as great, because there's so many organizations hiding the money in the valley, bus grade causes. So, it does make the bucking noise height, and we are constantly counting, we're continuing to try and find those funds. Any questions?
I do have a question. Um, as you guys know, that there is, we're working on a project for the new, for Sky High Park. At that point in time, based on the amount of money that's gonna be spent there, that is gonna change things. And I know that'll affect everybody that utilizes the Sky High Park complex. And I know that'll be a struggle, because I spent enough time on fair board to know that. But we need you guys to be partners with this. So, as you're gathering funds for fair, you need to be looking at this project because it'll benefit us all.
I definitely agree, it will benefit us all, and 4H would be one of the first organizations to step up. We have several councils, um, between Alamosa, New Orleans, to Wash, members that would get together for anything, for fundraising, the parents would step in to help. And, and we understand that there may be some cost raises to offset everything. We ask that you can do the best you can for us, because we're not like other organizations that might use the facility and run in greater amounts of funds, just because we are a 100% nonprofit, having to beg for every dime nothing yet. Beyond for more, each one of the councils also try to do fundraising to, to extra activities across the, the counties, such as trying to send our children to, to Washington focus groups, where you go and learn about how our nation runs, the government, or sending our kids to camps where they learn leadership. So, each one of those councils also do their own fundraisers. Horse council, which I sit on horse council, also has to do our own fundraisers, trying to get enough funds for awards during our horse show. So, I, I can't, I'm not a head of 4H, I'm not an agent, but I know that every family member, if you need help, our 4H gets to be there to help with any kind of instructions in, any kind of support.
I don't know. One of the, knowing that you were gonna be here tonight and thinking about the future of the Sky High project, one of the things that came to mind might be possibly a meeting with, with the fair board and the friends of the Sky High that's kind of overseeing that project, and, and maybe even a more long-term solution put together for the fair and the Sky High complex, so that, you know, so that you know that it's gonna be available for you and Sky High knows what, what they're going to receive from that as well. And I just thought that might be an idea that we might want to consider.
Your fair works. I wanted to speak over it works.
I, I've been to a couple of those meetings. I recently switched up sort of, I also sat on SCAM D work, so I, I hear.
You know.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just think it would be nice for you guys to know that you also have a little more of a long-term.
Sure.
Solution as well for that facility and for the fair.
And I hope, you know, this, or we, we understand that this is a cost, and, and you guys should be, have a, have a, we're not coming in here asking for a, or, or whatever funding, man, just, just asking, just asking, just.
Okay.
I couldn't, we've said it any better than this, kids, that's, that's what it's all about. Great job. Any questions to be?
No, I, I just want to comment, because I, we, we've had this conversation last year as well, but there's a lot of people in this community that don't realize what all fair consists of. And it's not just Rio Grande County. There are six counties in the San Luis Valley, and two of them are the poorest counties in the state, where most counties have a single individual county fair that may have a huge amount of funding, where these guys do not because of the counties, the way they set. I get real passionate about this program.
I think 4H goes beyond just fair. It's a lifetime, it's, it's a lifestyle, and you kids exemplify that and, and display that as adults as you grow up. And I think 4H is just something that, for the youth in a rural community, especially these poorer counties, can't be beat for teaching you, I, just so many lessons, so many life lessons. It's, it's not always about the animal, that's about the things you learn and the other things that go on to make that animal. And so, I'm a huge supporter of fair. I'm like.
It's, uh, as Mrs. Lucero said, it's what the kids do for each other.
Mm-hmm.
So, you will see that. Somebody may get grand champion, but they're gonna be there coaching the next one up. The last place is gonna be coached. They're not gonna just leave them out there. My daughter showed in fair, 18 years, 20 years, 12 years. Seems like a lifetime with all the, with 12 years. But this year, McKenzie, because of what she learned in fair, she's the goat superintendent. So, there's that future. And when you go to speaking, when you're, you guys learn this stuff, there, there's roles right here that need to be filled.
Community involvement.
And that gives you, that gives you that opportunity, and it, these roles will need to be filled. As much as I want to be here forever, I'm not. But, um, for, for the rest of the people in the community, it's, it's a very important program. And I know a lot of people don't support it, but they need to because of what it does for the youth of this community, and I wish more could be involved in it, so, thank you.
The, there's, one thing that I've noticed, you know, living here in the valley versus living in the city, and I hear it from so many people that I talk to, people that have moved here from all the ends of the earth, and I tell them, so, so you've been in the valley for six months, or you've been in here for two years. What do you like? Well, tell me, what do you, what do you think about the valley? The people, they say. The people are nicer, the people, you know, and I've experienced that, you know, living in the city, being on, stranded on the side of the road, nobody willing to help you at all, you know, versus being here in the valley, you know, stranded on the side of the road, somebody pulls up, hey, do you need some help? By the time, you know, the next heart pulls up, you know, the next person's asking if you need help, and the next person, until, you know, there's more help than you can ask for, you know, and, and I, I believe that that's part of this upbringing, you know, the 4H, all of that just ties in together to having a well-knit community, you know, here, here in the valley, because you get outside of here and you don't even know who your neighbors are, you know? So, I think it plays a huge role, and, you know, not just the kids, but the kids will be our adults here pretty quick.
Need to vote on that.
Have we in the past, didn't we, don't we typically discount fair fees?
So, the last four years, you, the council has discounted the fees. That's, Jaime gave me the report, and last year, you actually, the total cost was $6,160, and you gave them a $4,000 discount last year.
And the cost this year? What is this year's cost? I wasn't.
Last year, we paid $15,400.
Correct.
And this year?
Is what we're asking.
Yeah.
What's that based on?
It's a 35% discount.
Okay. What is our fee based on? Has it been kind of stable in the last years? I'm just curious. Not that it matters, I'm just curious. Do we always charge the same fee?
We increased it last year.
Yeah.
There was an increase. Yeah, but last year was an updated increase, yeah.
That's what I thought. Yeah, okay. And last year, you paid 1540. Is that what you just said?
Am I right, Nina?
That is correct. And those are based on the multipurpose building general use, and then the setup and tear down, and then the grandstands and the, the arena.
Okay.
And the stage.
And the stage. Okay, I'm just looking at numbers. I think we should give you a discount, for sure. I'm not sure what that amount should be. Do you have any ideas, Kathy? What are your thoughts?
So, why does the price difference issue?
It's a little bit different, yeah, 6,000 and 4,000. I'm still.
That I'm not sure of. That's, that's in Jaime's department, and he did not give me that report. I have last year's report and the fees that were charged last year.
And that was the?
And that was actually, it looks like they were given a 75% discount last year.
Right.
And normally. And normally, it's a 35% discount for nonprofit organizations.
Doesn't it have more for youth as well, being a youth program?
I believe that's the reason that it was given the 75% last year.
It's a lower amount this year that we're asking? Last year it was six, something?
$6,160 with a 75% discount, which was $4,004. They paid $1,540 last year.
Right. That's just such a big difference in the two years.
Well, you were. I guess I was giving you...
Okay. So it's the same this year as last year? That's what I was stuck on. Right. That's what I was stuck on. So the 35% brings it down to $4,000.
Yeah, last year I had, after the discount, I had $4,000.
There you go. That makes sense. That makes me feel better. I'm not a numbers person. Where'd our numbers person go? I am not a numbers person. Okay.
I've been in Nick's shoes on that side, asking for that as well.
Your fair numbers are about the same this year, aren't they? You said 303 last year and 301 this year? Yay. I have to say, even that is amazing, to keep those numbers steady and consistent in this day and age. I think that's huge. That's a big deal.
Did you get a count on the projects? Because there's kids that do more than one project. So how many projects out of that 301?
The projects that are covered appear, I mean, it's not just animals, it varies. The filmmaking, the cake making, the cooking.
Woodworking, leather.
Woodworking, and the craft side. Yeah, there's just, it's just in this list of projects that are covered, along with the animal livestock. And I know the numbers that we, that we earn from our auction, for large, and that does go all back to the child for small just occasionally, or to look back into the hundreds. My daughter raised turkeys last year, so it costs me, no joke, $2,000 to raise them turkeys. And she got $5,000. In fact, I'll look back to her, her home.
Right.
It's a lot of money.
That's a lot of money. And those are small animals.
Those are small animals.
But they are turkeys. So, we all know how smart they are. Yeah. And I guess, just as an educator, it's so important to get these kids away from their devices. And I know there's a little bit of that that goes on in fair, but it's, they're out doing something not behind a screen, and I'm just such a proponent of that.
And the record book, it's not like we just raise this animal for two months and it's off the road. Worse, until they're around where my daughter's feeding out the lizard, because they gotta eat regardless of how much they miss.
Absolutely.
And it's her dog. And they have to present, their record book being here of all the accounts and socials really teaching us how to scale.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
We need a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion. I'm looking at numbers. So last year you needed was a 75% discount overall, including the 35 for nonprofit?
Yes.
Are you looking at me? Everybody's waiting for me. I would move that we give them the same discount this year, also keeping in mind, we're going to have a new facility at some point, and everyone's going to have to pitch in to help pay for that new facility. And this might be the last year that that kind of a discount can happen. And we really do want you guys on board with our new facility, because we do it for you and for the rest of the folks in the community, not just, not just for the Stampede Committee, but it's for everyone in this community. And you folks are some of the most important ones, too. So keep that in mind, because I know that in the future, that discount might not be possible. And we're kind of struggling to keep the facility up and running as it is right now anyway. It's okay to be in, but it's not stellar to look at. So that's my motion, is that we do the same discount that we did last year.
I would second that. It's been moved and seconded. Do we give them the discount, the same as last year? Is there any more discussion?
Counselor Ellathorpe said, it's probably not going to be the kind of fee that's sustainable going forward. It would be really nice to have the fair more involved with what's happening at Sky High.
Nina?
Aye.
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 Go forward and do great things, you guys.
It's because of you kids being here, just so you know.
Right.
Thank you, guys. Thanks, Nick.
And you guys.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mariana King, grant writer.
Based on development consultants, and from the perspective of a development consultant, these previous presentations were very important. First of all, the city apparently is going to be operating over half of the next three years. Second of all, it's recommended by development people that operations budgets, close, set aside between 3% and development. And yes, we might notice the city doesn't have any resources. This is the issue. The government needs to purchase. I've been handling these for a number of years now. And last year, I had a contract with the city, and as I'm going to be in the latter term, it makes the, I made some mistakes in terms of criteria, so the same term I had a contract. So I'm here today and being stated. The original idea I had was to ask you to allow me to apply for USBA rural business program. We give our technical assistance to downtown, especially downtown businesses, in areas of urban development, businesses, property, building design. However, because the budget, we never shut down, this week, we have changed. The city, which we apply for USBA, we live to march, and we don't have resources to work. So as an alternative, I'm suggesting that the city allow me to apply for Colorado Department of Economic Development funding, and a program called Rural Technical Assistance Program, which essentially provides the same kinds of resources and services as the local administration. In the past, it's once downtown businesses are closed, and other ones that are pretty close, they don't even have property. However, most downtown businesses do not have both sides, but they do have websites that are very functional. The city doesn't have much of those that are in terms of active tourists. There's 500,000 tourists that fly by and drive through on this street here, and downtown businesses are aware that they need to devise ways to attract these tourists, so that they can apply and develop businesses, create more jobs, develop lineups, whatever kind of thing. One thing the city can do, if you were to set aside at least 3% of your operating budget, is to, for example, retain a grant writer as a university advisor, as a consulting consultant, to apply for money to infrastructure. For Sky High, with a lot of course, the city can partner, I, as a producer, for 4H, to apply to. The city can, for years, should go and apply to grant writers. And the city is a good candidate to apply for such funding, because of the infrastructure, the history of the country, as organizations like the Marcus, the Thomas, the Montes, the C, the U of New York City, Don't Get a Bad Jevy, the Florida, or the Nebraska, or the Nebraska. What I have here is a camp of information for you to do. The top is, the main points, the downtown businesses build needs, for, I have been to before. The second, the second part of this document is, a list of resources and recommendations for the city to proceed, not only initially applying for state funding, which is a background application, application, resources, but also to apply for integrated cost rate. For example, if the city were to apply $100,000 in federal money, if you had an integrated cost rate proposal that was awarded by the O M B, due to the $100,000 plus $18,000 of operations in general, that would help to add cushion to the city operations funding, and also be available for the businesses. So I recommend the city apply for integrated cost rate. Also, if federal, economic, and business development opportunities are available to the US Department of Agriculture, the Department of Commerce, the Department of Labor, so if you were to apply to the city, that you have a $1,000 KOL grant, and you have 18% cost rate agreement, that would draw 30,000 dollars for it. So I really recommend you proceed to be able to draw a cost rate. And also, to, I think it's commendable that the city council personnel is to grant writing, but because of the nature of times, downtown businesses are closing, or are in jeopardy, or not doing functioning, that the city council, the city can take a more proactive role in building businesses and programs. The USBA is designated as something scaling, and it's a strike force area, because this is one of the, this is the most impoverished region in Colorado. We have some of the most impoverished communities, and Rio Grande is one of them. So the city can take more tactical and generate jobs, help failing businesses, help new and emergency businesses, and also build certain chances of use, and create a quality of resources. The other resources, in the Monta Vista Journal today, the some of these, now, development resources group has a meeting grant, for $5,000, you have to help with helping. You can make an argument that the goal courses, part of the community development economic development, perhaps the city can apply for the $5,000 that help the first units. This grant is $5,000 local, yes, government can apply, and it's on a first down, for certain places in China. More resources the city can take advantage of. It's Rio Grande County's, it's an enterprise zone, which offers tax credits, and for a limited amount of time, Rio Grande County is also part of the goal in Opportunity Zone. The Opportunity Zone has time limits. I recommend that you apply for Opportunity Zone staffs, members, or other kinds of technical people, who need that kind of assistance. And another resource of income is to Colorado Department of Economic Development, they have an incentives program for small businesses, which includes loans, technical assistance, and support for charities. So I included this list in the paper. And also, I have letters of support here for downtown businesses, who are asking to reinstate my contract, and otherwise pursue small business development funding. I have a letter from, I'm sure, from Barbara, from Adam Street Salon, from Calliens, a letter from S O D Curiosities, a letter from Mayos, a letter from the Chanticleer Restaurant, and I put that locally, of local, in the prisons, which is also support. The city has paid me a retainer for my $1,000, my original contract was $32,000, and so the city were to reinstate my contract at this point, I would be paid $2,275, or the cost of the $3,400. And also, a letter to write this grant to the city, it would provide a template for other economic development applications in the city, my 12%.
Jen, would you please?
So council members, before you, you have a memo that I wrote on behalf of myself and Forrest, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. So I'm going to go ahead and read it, so everybody can, audience can hear. Before you, this evening, you have a request from Miss King to reinstate her contract as a grant writer for the city of Monta Vista. On May 19th, 2018, the city of Monta Vista entered into a contract with Miss King to write, complete, and submit an economic development administration grant in the amount of $60,000 by May 31st, 2015. Compensation for this contract was as follows, I pulled this from the original contract, and she was to be paid $950 due, as a down payment, at the time of the execution of the contract, paid on an invoice provided by the contractor, and the balance of $2,200 would be due within 30 days of receipt of the contractor's invoice and proof of submission for grant proposal to the proper government agency. The city shall have no obligation to make any payments until such time as the city accepts performance as satisfactory. However, the city of Monta Vista issued Miss King payment in the form of check number 28573 in the amount of $975, which was 30% of the retainers' services. The check cleared our bank account on May 11th, 2018. However, Miss King failed to meet the terms of the contract, and the grant was never applied for. Miss King failed to uphold the contractual agreement, and as a result, currently needs to repay the city the original $975 that was paid to her with the services that was never rendered. We sent Miss King an invoice in the amount of $975 on June 12th, 2018, to request repayment, and I personally spoke to Miss King on several occasions in which she stated that she would not pay the city back. Not only is the city out the money we paid Miss King for the services that weren't rendered, but we also lost out on the $60,000 grant that was never applied for. I would like to also point out that the city is currently not seeking or looking for more heavily budgeted for a grant writer or a grant writing position. Should this be something that council wants or wishes to pursue, we would need to follow proper procedure and put out an RFP, open the grant writing contract up if it is. We would also need to consider the budgetary issues that would need to be addressed for such a decision in contract.
Thank you, Jenny.
The presentation I did, I just made, did not preclude, you know, this presentation. I admitted that I was a retainer, and I admitted that I misread the criteria and didn't follow through. So my question is, you know, what...
but we also lost out on the $60,000 grant that was never applied for. I would like to also point out that the city is currently not seeking or looking for or more heavily budgeted for a grant writer or a grant writing position. Should this be something that council wants or wishes to pursue, we would need to follow proper procedure and put out an R F P and open the grant writing contract up if it is. We would also need to consider the budgetary issues that would need to be addressed for such a big decision in a contract.
Thank you, Jenny.
The presentation I just made did not preclude this presentation. I admitted that I was a paid retainer, and I admitted that I misread the criteria and didn't follow through. So my question is, you know, what next? The bigger picture is that the city can apply for money, that it's desperately needed by downtown businesses. I have a superb grant writing record, over 90% success rate, I've been writing grants as an administrator and as a consultant for 27 years. The usual grant writing success rate is $10,000. So a 90% success rate is phenomenal. So I asked you to look beyond the immediate horizon. I admitted my liability to the city. I never said I would not be that city. That's misunderstanding or a misinterpretation. So my proposal still stands. I propose to ask you to reinstate my contract. I have the obvious support of downtown businesses, which I think should supersede past mistakes that I've made in the smaller vision of holding me accountable, which is something that I already admitted when I came in before, and I want to rectify that situation, and I'm asking for an opportunity to do that. Also, looking beyond the smaller picture, looking at the big picture, a grant writer, whether as a consultant or as a staff writer, would help the Gulf Force, the infrastructure money, compensation, et cetera, et cetera. Everybody with me?
Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
I also have a email from Forrest, who could not be here this evening, and at this time, he recommends under no circumstance to reinstate this contract.
I don't stand for that. But I want to understand, there's no rationale given. You related the facts, and I admit the facts before you leave the presentation. So what's the rationale given by this request?
Okay, here, here's what I'm going to tell you. We're put between a rock and a hard spot based on the fact that you went to local businesses and asked for their support. So if we sit here and say no, then it makes it look like we are going to deny the local support to the businesses. But I'm going to tell you right now, based on the fact of what happened the last time you did this, I personally will not vote for reinstating you at this point in time. This is a conversation that needs to be had in an executive session, because pretty much the way I feel, Ms. King, is that we got stung the last time, and I'm afraid it's going to happen again. So at this point in time tonight, there will not be a decision made. I back what Forrest says, and I'm telling you what I think.
What do you mean stung?
What stung? Based on what they read to you? What happened the last time?
I'm not denying that happened.
Okay, but-
But I am denying that I told Forrest that I would not be reinstated. That's just simply not true.
Well, this is over a year ago.
Personally, I think we don't go forward at all unless it goes out to an R F P.
And it will-
Agreed.
It will have to go to an R F P.
The bigger point is that the city must forward and do something to support downtown businesses, which are a desperate need.
Well, we have been-
From the smaller points, look beyond the past error that I made, you know, I did not sting the city.
Well, we are in support of what goes on in this city, but at this point in time, if we go for a grant writer, it will be in an R F P situation, and it will be done the proper legal way. We are not going to be doing this right here tonight, so we thank you for your-
Well, I was hired last time properly, and an R F P was not efficient. But the bigger point is that downtown businesses are in desperate need. You've written letters of support, they have faith in me, and I don't understand why the city council does not. You know, one strike and I'm out? It's unreasonable, but I understand what you say. You have any questions, I think?
It's going to an, if we do this, it'll go to an R F P. You will have your time to be put a proposal in at that point, but tonight, not.
The S O D D R G is first down for service, and it's time sensitive, and then the Colorado State funding is due on June 30th, and that's also just a decision.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I hope you followed through on the other resources that I gave you, and my recommendation to set aside operations funding, because we can't afford not to at this point.
City welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit to your comments to three minutes. Council will not take action at this same meeting. So if you have something, anybody out here has something? You've got three minutes, Margot.
Yes. Margot Anderson, hello, everybody. I just wanted to point out that the business next to the old Sonic business still has all that trash and junk sitting out there. So I see our ordinance person isn't here, and I just wonder what the status was on that. So when you drive past, there's all that stuff sitting there with my head. So just put that out. I want to say yay, I don't see near as many cats running loose or dogs, so ordinance guys do a great job. And I was wondering, actually, there's someone else. Oh, oh, the water restrictions, I heard people, I don't know why we're having water restrictions, so I let them know. So I'm passing the word out, and they don't get it. Why we have lottery prescriptions, please call them. So thank you for your help that you've done, and I appreciate it. And I just want to say good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Margot. Anybody else? Do you have something? Anybody else? Okay, time's up. Go on to contracts, agreements, and leases.
So before you tonight is the intergovernmental agreement for provisions of information technology services. This is an agreement that the city of Montevista has with the city of Alamosa to retain our I T group, which includes Jim Belknap, Brandon Gallegos, and Christian, yeah, Christian, Christian. So we have budgeted in our budget for this agreement with an additional $5,000. Forrest has met with Heather, the city manager for city of Alamosa, and the agreement was made between the both of them, and from what I understand is last night they passed it at the city of Alamosa first reading. We do not have to pass that on a first reading, just so you know. It is an intergovernmental agreement that is set forth by us with the city of Alamosa, so all it is is just an intergovernmental agreement that will need to be signed by council.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Nita.
So I do need a motion in a second.
Motion in a second to sign it?
Yes.
To approve it?
I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Alamosa for I T services that I think are hugely beneficial and truly appreciated.
I would second that motion.
Definitely appreciate it. The I T guys are the bomb. Is there any more discussion?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the I G A agreement with the city of Alamosa for I T.
Any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Elathor-
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Jenny?
All I have to say is I will be thankful when that man's back. Before I go through the financials, I'm sorry, we missed a point when Kyle was here. I do need you guys to do a motion to approve and accept the 2018 audit and financials. If you wouldn't mind, can we do that now, or does that need to be something different?
They can do that.
I move that we accept the 2018 audit and financials as stated earlier.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the audit. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Elathor-
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Now the fun stuff, this year. So, as you probably know, the reason why I haven't been here for the last three months is because we've been trying to get the audit done, and as you can see, there is a lot of work that goes into that. So I apologize that I'm here to report the first quarter, but we're ahead of the game from last year, so we're doing good. Just to kind of touch on a few high points for the first quarter, 25% of the year has lapsed, so in our general fund, we're at 27% of our budgeted revenue. So that's really good. We're coming in about 2% higher than what we anticipated. Some of our smaller generating revenue line items are coming in higher, such as dog licenses. So, you know, that's kind of contributed there. So kudos to, I think our code enforcement is definitely helping pick that up a little bit and get us where we need to be there. We're doing a great job again this year with keeping our expenditures below our revenues. We're at 23% of our budgeted expenditures, which are coming in at $719,285 for the first quarter. So as of the month end, March 31st, we have $142,935 in our bank account that's associated with the general fund. Our overall bank account balance in our main checking is a little over $2 million right now. So again, the city's continuing to go forward strong and healthy, which is a good sign. So in the general fund, revenues exceeded expenditures by $124,000, increasing the fund balance to $993,262 from $868,000 at the end of the year. So kudos again to our department heads for keeping the cap on things there. This year, we do have a little bit of a change. As you'll recall from last year, Tabor was restricted to $90,000. This year, it's restricted to $103,500, which Kyle kind of talked a little bit about that, but I don't think he gave you the actual number. So there's the actual number for this year that's restricted for Tabor. In our water fund, our revenues are coming in at 22% of the approved budget, or $204,680, with the majority of that coming from services. Expenditures at the month end, we're at 12%. Now, I want to kind of touch base a little bit on this in the water and sewer fund. As you'll recall, we budgeted for some pretty big capital improvements. So our expenditures in those two funds are going to look really small until we do those capital improvements, because it's playing off of those. So just kind of keep that in mind. But overall, in the water fund, for the most part, things are staying so-so. I know Rob had a discussion today, so, like I said, our department heads do a really good job of keeping an eye on what they're spending and knowing where they're at with their budgets and their current expenditures, so. As of March 31st, the unrestricted cash in the water fund was $1.1 million. So, and then in the water fund, revenues exceeded expenditures by $21,000, which brought the fund balance to almost $1.9 million in the water fund. So for the sewer fund, revenues were at 41%. So part of that, why that's stated so high, is because we did get some grant revenue that's calculated in there that we were kind of waiting on. So that's in there, as well as our, again, the expenditures are staying down low. So in the sewer fund, the unrestricted cash for that fund is $402,905, and the fund balance in the sewer fund is $4.3 million. So all three of our major funds have healthy fund balances that, you know, Kyle alluded to, that we definitely have what we should have there for emergency reserves on all three of them. So in your packets, you'll find further detail as far as where line items are coming in. So if you have any further questions or anything, please let me know.
Thank you for your work. Where did the money for the prospect pump repairs come out of? Was it just out of the general fund?
No, so the prospect pump repairs will come out of the water and sewer fund, right? Yeah.
But it's-
And just keep in mind that those repairs will be depreciated, so we won't take that full hit right away.
Okay, okay.
You'll see it, you'll see it in the year as the full cost, but then when we get ready to do the pre-audit work and the audit work, all of that will get moved from the line item capital expenditures over to the capital assets, and then depreciated, and we'll take the depreciation expense at the end of the year.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
Thank you, Jenny. Thanks, Jenny. We'll put Mike on the hot seat first? Okay.
Mayor and council, thank you. Couple minor things really going on. Got a ordinance on trying to handle cap problem, and I think hopefully everybody's received a copy, and I would appreciate your comments on that. I know Kathy's probably the most knowledgeable, so really depend on her. City court, we are busy and doing well, and, you know, I really appreciate the job Nita does. I mean, if I need something, she's right on the money and gets me stuff, and so it's really, you don't get to, you know, comment on people's good behavior. Usually, it's you ding them when something goes wrong, you know, and that's all they hear, but, and, and so I really do appreciate that. And the same with Jenny. I mean, I asked her to get some information that I think is going to be interesting for the council to hear, and I know she was busy with the audit, but she got that information. So it's really good, I think we've got some really good people in place. I did attend the SERSA workshop, I guess, or program that we had here, and we had folks from all over the valley. Unfortunately, I was the only lawyer there, but the good news is that she said it was the best lunch she's ever had here, so we did a real good job there. And I've known Tammy for many years. I tried cases with her when she was a young lawyer, and now she's basically heading the SERSA department, and she's going to do a great job. But it was on harassment in the workforce, and her main idea is to prevent problems, develop a culture that will prevent, you know, litigation and prevent problems. And this is where you, an ounce of prevention is definitely worth a pound of cure. And I think that, you know, everybody's job from the city council on down should be, how can I prevent problems? You know, typically, the police department is our highest risk, probably, but somebody can fall asleep on a snowplow and run over somebody, and you've got litigation. And I think that we need to really develop a culture of how do we do a better job? How do we get the best people in place? And once you've got the best people in place, how do you get those people trained underneath to do a good job? And I think we're, we're really in a pretty good spot here. I do like, even like, the neighborhood watch programs, because it's an ounce of prevention. I mean, if somebody's sneaking around my house, and somebody calls in and the police come in, there's no crime, no problem. But if somebody breaks into a house or my house, it, the police have to come and investigate. They have to do up reports. If they pick somebody up, they have to arrest that person, take him over to Del Norte. The Del Norte folks have to start processing, put somebody in jail. That person then ends up going to the courts, and the courts get involved, the court staff become involved, the sheriff's department, the DA's office, their staff, and then on top of that, the public defender gets involved representing the defendant. And when it's all said and done, if that case goes to trial, you drag in 40 taxpaying folks to come in for j-. folks to come in for jury duty, and out of those, you pick up 12 people. The drain on the money and resources and time of the police department and folks like that is just horrendous. I'm sure the chief can tell you, you get one little minor deal, and you've got to do 10 reports. And so if somebody just made that first call, there's no problem, because nobody broke into my house. And it's the same with the litigation, same principle. When somebody brings a lawsuit or somebody sues the city, you end up with SIRSa having to get a team of lawyers, paralegals, secretaries, on that one case. And then they spend lots of money. And so I guess we've got to get to a point to, instead of maybe breaking into somebody's house and knock down their door and go in, sometimes you've got to go get a warrant, and it might take a little bit longer. But that's the kind of thing that I think we really need to impress upon all our staff. And the, it's interesting, and I looked at the numbers, and I was really kind of surprised at the cost of our insurance carrier rates. When you, when you, SIRSa looks at a two-year program usually to determine what the risk is to them from the city of Amata Vista. Based on all the numbers, it's fairly high risk. And although this council inherited a couple of lawsuits which we resolved, so far, this council hasn't been in any real litigation, which is great for the last year. And the month, the years of January up to now, we do not have any litigation pending, which is really good. But I just wanted the council to be aware that it is, you know, your job, my job, chief's job, Public Works, everybody's job, to keep in mind that we need to pay attention, not be in litigation, avoid the cost. I think we would be much better off using the money we're spending to buy snow blowers and equipment and hire good people and pay folks more money. I mean, just so that you folks have an idea, in 2013 and 14, we were spending about $88,000 a year for our insurance rates. In 2015, it dropped to 71, which still is not a good deal in my book. 2016, it's 125, and 2017, 118. And we'll probably be about 150 this year, based on our past two years. So, you know, although we've been out of litigation, they're going to tag us for a two-year period based on what they spend in legal fees and what they settle a case for. And as you folks know, when a case gets settled, it's out of our control. They just tell us we're going to pay, and then they charge us more money because they had to pay. So it's a tough program to be involved, and I would rather see us spending $12,000, $13,000 a month on equipment, on paying people more money, on putting our budget in a little bit better spot. And unless you look at the numbers, you kind of go, well, I guess we just got to pay them because that's the way it works. But it's, you know, I think the city's been in quite a bit of litigation, and I think we need to try and avoid it as best we can. And when I look at an issue, I try and look at it and say, all right, dang, if we go this way, we might get sued. If we don't, how do we get around that? And I think that it's, the numbers are a little bit shocking to me, but I think it's something we just need to work on, pay attention, get the best people in place, and I think we're in a pretty good spot with that. But again, I would, you know, ask that the council, make sure that the chief is running his people through training, and make sure that those kind of things happen, because when you get into litigation, as the chief probably well knows, the first thing they start trying to do is figure out what kind of training program, what kind of policies have you got? How well was this guy experienced? What was, did he have a bunch of personnel issues going on? So I really just felt like it's important for the council to see numbers, because when you see them out there, you go, well, what's going on? So that's really all I have in the way of report, but I think it is everybody's job here to avoid spending a bunch of money on insurance rates, and let's invest that money into the community and let it run through the system seven times. So that's all, unless anybody has any questions.
Chief Rosecrans.
Good evening. It's kind of behind the curtain, so hang it out there. You don't have to take it. Police department's definitely the number one spot for litigation.
I'm glad he said it was you and not me.
We are trying. It's also the number, kind of, I don't know, I haven't looked at everybody else's budget, but trying to get training monies and training equipment and updated equipment that reduces some of those things. It's been ongoing. And I think, in general, SIRSa has come out and looked at us. We've gone to some trainings that they recommended based on one of the lawsuits. We attended that 100%. So I think, I have to, but for the grace of God, we go forward, because there, we're working in a world that happens at 100 miles an hour, and, you know, full speed, right in our face, and with a bunch of guys who, you know, do a job that's pretty, pretty unique. It takes a pretty unique person to take on those tasks and then to be able to have the skills to be able to step up to that. So it's a lot of moving parts, and I feel really fortunate that the 19 months I've been here, we haven't done anything that we've paid for yet, but we will, we will continue to do our best. So the events, just kind of as a reminder, I missed last coffee with a cop, which I'm proud to say went over. I got two texts while I was gone that said, hey, your guys represented you very well. So I appreciate that. But the next one's June 8th. It's at Mountain View from 8:00 to 10:00. Neighborhood Watch is this coming Monday. We are in our new format, so we're not so much about our neighborhood greeting-meeting kind of format. We're in our educational and training format. This is a two-part series on defending yourself and the rights you have as a homeowner slash gun owner, and what you can do to protect yourself. So please join us. It should be fun. I believe we're going to do some introductions on cameras and those systems. So there's a lot of education going, and hopefully everyone can take back to their community groups. Crime Stoppers is really going gangbusters. We're having a lot of fun, and we are selling tickets for a rifle. So you've got to get in tickets. They're 10 bucks a piece, or you can get three for $25. It's a Vanguard Series Weatherby 270, synthetic stock, you know, 22, 24-inch barrel, I think. So mayor, you need at least a dozen tickets, at least. So see any of the board members, one of which is right here. So if you need tickets, let us know. National Night Out. Talk about Neighborhood Watch, talk about Crime Stoppers, talk about everything else, culminated in one. It will be the city, the city open house, all in one. So this is a big night for us. It's August 6th. It runs from 5:30 PM to 8:00 PM in Chapman Park, and the entire city staff will be there, probably showing off what they do to some degree, but also just interacting with the community, feeding everybody, hot dogs, hamburgers, having fun for the kids. We hope to have maybe some donation or some adoption options through the local animal shelter, and just a lot of things going on. There'll be more on this. We've only had our first kind of preliminary planning meeting, but we all believe there were around 350 people there last year. We're hoping to have at least half again this meeting, so we're hoping for 500 or more. So this could be really fun. There'll be a lot to do. We don't even know what all that looks like yet, but it should be really exciting, and hopefully all of you can save the date and come out and have some fun. Another date, June 22nd, from 10:00 to 2:00 in South Fork, is a fundraiser for the K-9 program. Outdoor Depot is a local business that rents equipment for ATVs, Jeeps. They sell a lot of wares for outdoor fun and just kind of general fun paraphernalia for the valley, and they wanted a cause. Well, they reached out to the K-9 Fund and the K-9 Unit, and we're going to be their cause for this year. So they're really about getting together and celebrating the valley and the spring and the things that can be done during the summer, but in the meantime, we're going to be there, and the Canines will be doing demonstrations, finding drugs, so it'll be a lot of fun. So if you can get out on the 22nd of June, it's a Saturday, come out to the Outdoor Depot in South Fork from 10:00 to 2:00 PM. It'll be amazing. Statistics, you know, I hate to talk too much about it, because first of all, it's early. We've been on this amazing down decline in the most kind of sought statistics that we wanted to reduce, and so far, everything has been really kind of going like we like. And at the same time, we've been pretty steady on calls for service, and for the most part, we've kind of staying the same busy, but it's in a different way. So I'm really not always sure what that means, to be honest. I know we're having a lot of calls for service that are people-related. We have a lot more victims that are more human victims, but they're known people. They're not what I would call random violence. They're not the kind of thing that I would say scares a community, and yet it's something that we still need to work on. And we still need to work on how we treat each other, and I think that's a big part of kind of what we're seeing right now. And I don't know if that's related to anything we're doing, the city's doing, the fact that it's growing, that there's a lot of stress in, you know, everyday life, but we have a lot of domestics, we have a lot of assaults, and just a lot of activity between people. And at the same time, we're working a lot more major cases. We're putting, I think we're putting a very significant in drugs and drug distribution as opposed to possession, which was the easy low-hanging fruit to deal with, and that's really not, I think, going to do us as much good in the long run. So the lead program is taking a lot of those numbers kind of even out of the equation, which is a good thing. And that's exactly what we're wanting to do, which gives us more time to focus on what I think we would all agree, if you're going to have a war, it needs to be on that, the source, the distributor, you know, the biggest producer of the problem. And I think it's working, but I'm not always sure what I'm looking at, especially when I'm looking at small increments. It's really hard when you come out of winter, when things are pretty quiet, and spring, they're really busy. It's a phenomenon, I can't explain, but you can ask just about any police department, any officer, spring is crazy. It's just a busy time. I don't know if it's like kids out of school or what, but it's that concept for people too. And we're really busy, and it, but it's not uncommon, and yet we have nine burglaries to date. That's like 10% of the five-year average. So it's, if it stays, great. If it doesn't, I don't know, but I think we're doing a lot of good things. And I think it starts, like some of the talk that Mike had, it starts with the prevention, and I think it's maybe starting to show. We'll find out. Administration, this is helping as well, and, you know, something that I'm pretty proud of, and I think that the guys are too, is that we're fully staffed, but we're not fully positioned, and that's defined as we have three people in training. We have one that's just about to graduate, one that's probably two-thirds through, and one that will start the 22nd into his official officer training. That's a major drag. Three out of 13 full-time officers are basically in training, which means three people have to be with them. So it's, that's a pretty major drag on resources and time. So that will be amazing and probably a serious boost, just almost like letting the shackles off, for us to be able to kind of get back to business. And yet morale is very high. Everybody seems very happy, very, not only happy with the fact that these hires are getting close, they're happy with these hires. They're fitting in well, they're really excited about to have these gentlemen on board, and I think we're positioned very well to kind of move into the future. We don't have any knowledge of an impending loss, but that's kind of how losses come in our business. They don't really want to tell you until they're on the way out, because that's just how it goes in law enforcement, and I'm not exactly sure why. But so Brandon Stevens is kind of the big excitement. He graduates tomorrow at 10:00, so I will miss Arbor Day. I apologize. That's the only reason I'm not going to be there, is because I'm going to be pinning his badge on, which is pretty exciting. So at the college at 10:00, I'll be pinning the badge on him, swearing him in. We'll bring him in here next council meeting, so you'll get to meet him, and we'll embarrass him up here in the corner like we do everybody else. We already have. We can't ask him to do it twice. We probably could change our rules in the future and have it live, but I don't know. That might not go along with what we just talked about. And you might ask, why do we taze people? It's actually optional. It's not mandatory at all. There's not even any shaming necessarily involved, but it does give credibility. I think when, one of the first times I remember getting yelled at by a mom as a sergeant about why her kid got tased, she thought we killed him. She thought they'd never be the same, there'd be brain damage, and for the most part, his life was over. And I didn't understand that that was her frame of reference. That was where she was coming from when she found out we had changed taste. Her adult son, I can't remember how old he was, he was a young man, but he was an adult. And when I told her, I'm like, ma'am, I've been tased. He's been tased. That officer's been tased. She went, really? She had no idea. So the concept is to give some credibility to it, to understand how powerful of a tool it is, because it can be very dangerous, and to use improperly is a big deal. So people say, well, you're not going to shoot me with your nine-millimeter, are you? I know, it's not, that's not the same concept, but that could be applied, and I have been told that, but that's not the case. Though, not to digress, but that's going to be good to get Brandon out there as well. This young man has worked with the police department since he was nine. This is a true one of those Explorer Youth Programs. There's pictures of him helping string the cord for Stampede. When he looks next to Ivan Garcia like he's coming up to his waist. I mean, this kid, he's just been that guy. So it's pretty exciting. He passed with flying colors. He didn't tell me his score, but he was proud of it, so that tells me it wasn't close. He passed his post test today, and he graduates tomorrow. So anyway, that's pretty cool. K-9 teams, unbelievable. They are just rolling. They took another gun off the street the other night. They served a warrant up in South Fork yesterday. I mean, the two are really working well together. The dogs are pinging on all cylinders. So I'm really excited about those guys and what they're going to be able to do and how they're going to use their tools to take it to the next level. Takes time, slow process, lots of work, lots of paperwork. Courts don't make anything easy, but that's the way it's supposed to be. But they're really doing a good job, so we'll continue to try to support them as much as possible. And then finally, Margo, code enforcement, we, yes, you were right. There's a lot to do in code enforcement. I am happy with some of the things that are going on. I'm not super happy with the old Sonic, but it's significantly better than it was. I wish we did some, we talked about, I talked to Patrick today, we probably are shooting ourselves by not documenting his progress better, because it's so incremental, it's kind of like, you know, watching your hair grow. You don't really, me, I'm not a good example, but, because I would be there forever, but some of you are going, wow, all of a sudden, my hair's down the middle of my back. It's just, you don't notice it, because you look in the mirror every day. And I think when I see it, because I try to go around, and I don't go around every day, but I pick a certain area of town, and I kind of make my rounds, like a 10-day rotation. And I can really see the difference, especially from almost two years ago when I got here. I really see a difference, and it's not just because of what code enforcement and the police department's done. I think, you know, the push by council, the impact that Public Works has had, the general change in, I think, morale, the excitement about the city not being, going that way, but going that way. I think it's all starting to kind of feed into that, you know, and we have really good representation across the city, too. And I do think what you guys are doing with your neighbors and your constituents are a big help. So I think everybody deserves a round of applause for that. However, there's a lot to be done, and, you know, we just instituted a parking ticket. You're like, okay, parking ticket? Well, it's bigger than that. So this is, this is a citation that will basically take our door hanger to the next level. So we've had a door hanger for years. It's truly just a piece of paper that has a hook on it, hanging on the door, and it serves as a warning for people who don't want to talk to us or people who we can't get a hold of. We'll send certified letters as well, but there's a lot of folks that just don't want to answer the door. So the door hangers are ways to say, look, we're here for a purpose, and here's what we're trying to rectify or fix or ask you to help us with coming into compliance. Well, the parking ticket's the next step. The next thing that gets left is if someone's in the court or a fine that you have to pay by mail. Judge is okay with it, it's been held up in court, and we got our first ticket out on the streets today. The only one using it right now is code enforcement, so we're going to see how it goes. But it can be applied from anything, from a car parked on the side of the road, to something abandoned, to a dog at large that we can't find the owner, we can leave it hanging on the door. It all precedes some sort of context, so we're not just handing these things out. door. It all precedes some sort of context, so we're not just handing these things out, you know, without any kind of warning or education. So nothing has changed, but what has changed is once you have been warned, we're gonna not kind of play this game of we have to get you to sign the bottom of the ticket. We're kind of done with that. And the fine is your option. You can come to court, or you can pay the fine. If you want to pay the fine, we'll be back in a few days, give you another ticket, or you can fix the problem. So hopefully, it'll make Patrick's life a lot easier, and they'll understand that compliance is, is the only thing we are out to get. We're not out to get your money. We're not really even out to get, to force our way. It's compliance with the, the laws and the, and the code regulations that are out there. And I, and I think it'll just be another one of those tools that hopefully will help out making everything look a little better. So that's all I had. I didn't really have a lot of in-depth stuff. Sorry to put this together at the last minute, but I was enjoying 10 days on the West Coast. I'm sure my wife put a thousand pictures somewhere, so you probably all, probably all saw what we were up to. There you go. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Public Works, Mr. Vance.
Good evening, Council. My report's fairly short this month. We're still kind of getting into the summer swing. Lots of things going on, kind of touch on the streets. Been doing some sweeping, some pothole patching, some grading roads. Started to do some work in the alleys and try to clean those up, but it seems, seems like every time we stick machines into the alley, the next day we get snow or rain, and it kind of defeats the purpose. So, still working on that. Streets have also completed two of Code Enforcement's property cleanup work requests, so we got two properties cleaned up. I think they look pretty good. So, some things are working well with Patrick on that. So, in the parks, water's been turned on in most of the parks. We got a couple of gardens that we still need to get turned on. Need to buy new controllers. Just a small battery, I've got one, so nothing big. So that'll be done next week. We've hired our seasonal, our summer seasonals. We've got one kid from high school, and then another older gentleman, so they'll be starting here pretty quick. Not on yet, so that's kind of why the parks are still not quite mowed. Next week, we'll start our regular mowing schedule. We did get two brand-new John Deere mowers in with baggers, so the end of the hay season, as I call it, we won't have all the hay rolled up on the parks. So, they're bigger mowers than what we had in the past. So they're 72-inch decks, so they're much larger. So hopefully, we'll be all right with that. Barely fed on our trailers. We're gonna have to consider new trailers sometime, but for right now, doing okay. We are getting the garden club ready for flowers, and we'll have the downtown planters here probably by the first part of June set up. So they're at North River right now in Alamosa getting planted, so we'll be picking those up third or fourth of June. And the water and sewer side, running full, full speed right now. Got some backflows that we're doing, and making sure that our businesses are complying with the backflow requirements that was set by the EPA. We are also in turning water off. During the winter months, from November through March, we offer our citizens 15,000 gallons of free water to kind of promote them to run water, so we don't have frozen meters. What we're finding over the last couple of years is that people are taking that period of time from November to March, and they don't pay a whole lot in November. A lot of folks aren't paying at all in December with the holidays and stuff. Same thing in January, same thing in February. So when March comes and we actually start doing it, the bills are fairly large. And then in April, when we actually start shutting water back off, everybody's really surprised. So, to our citizens that are listening, we are giving you a benefit by not turning your water off to save the water system and to save the plumbing in your house. You really need to make a conscious effort to make sure that those bills get paid, because we will turn water off again beginning in April. We continue to do that. April, we turned 60-some people off. Last month, this last month, we turned 47 off. Those are huge increases. Normally, six to 10. So, huge increases. And a lot of it is they have allowed their bills to just substantially get larger and larger each of those months. You have to remember, they're paying a $50 late fee, $50 shut-off notice. Just the fees by not paying their bill, they could have covered their next month's bill. So, so just a reminder on that. I, I am gonna put an article in the paper to kind of explain the system and really push people, and I'll do that again towards the end of the year, just to remind them as we do get into winter. Wastewater, we're starting the veterans plan up. It's been a little difficult. We've had some aeration issues. Just the aerators are so old and the piping and stuff. They're, they've been spending a lot of time out on the boat. So, that is, as far as public works, probably the worst job you could possibly imagine. You're standing on a 12-foot rowboat in the middle of a sewage lagoon, trying to pull up an aerator that's completely waterlogged and probably weighing close to 150 pounds, and you're trying to drag it up about nine feet. So, not a fun job, and still balance on the boat. So, definitely not a fun job. On my side, still working on the suburb projects. Been meeting with the engineers, and also with some vendors and contractors, getting things ready, as Jenny alluded to, as far as the, especially in the water and sewer fund. Our projects aren't gonna hit until towards the end of summer. We're in engineering, because we did change engineering firms right now, so you're not gonna see those big expenses until then. So, just keep in mind that we have some fairly large expenses coming out towards the end of summer, first part of fall, okay? So, like I said, don't, don't be doing the, the happy dance yet, because the, the money will be spent. So, also, kind of going off of what City Attorney was talking about, we've implemented a training, kind of following through with the, the police officers. On Wednesdays, we're meeting here, and we're doing an entire Public Works group training to cover some of the training requirements that SIRS has. We have different folks with different abilities as far as IT, so we figured it would just be easier to sit down with the overhead projector, do those hour trainings, take an hour each week, and get them done, get them knocked out, just in an effort to try to do better with training, with safety, you know. Everybody talks about, you know, the police and how dangerous that job is, but believe it or not, statistically, there's more people that's killed in construction zones than there is across the nation as far as a police officer. There was two last week. Both of them died in trenches. Both were working by themselves during a cave-in. One man wasn't found until his wife went looking for him, four hours after he was supposed to be home, and found him buried in a trench. So his employer didn't even notice he was gone. So, pretty sad things. And, and like I said, you know, when a trench or something like that caves in, it's 100 miles an hour. I mean, to steal what the chief said, it happens. You don't have a chance to think. I, I remember when I was younger, a man was actually in a trench. Everybody, including the emergency services, thought that he was standing upright in the trench, so they brought an excavator, and the first dig was fine. The second dig took off his legs. So, because he was actually from the course, the bear pushed him to a sitting position. But with all the pressure, he thought he was standing, and everybody dug around and thought he was standing. So, very dangerous. Good news. Cleanup days. It was Friday and Saturday. I actually have to say, it was a huge success. I was a little worried about Friday. It was cloudy, it was cold. We managed on that day. We took 121 cubic yards of material out of town, seven 30-yard dumpsters. Saturday was huge, much busier. We filled all of our dumpsters, filled our trucks, filled the Sky High parking lot full of limbs and stuff, and we wound up sending about 25 people to the landfill to dump loads that we didn't longer had any room for. So, it took a couple days. So, in all, about 270 tons. So, that's, that's pretty good. So, so that was good. The last thing I want to leave you guys with is, don't forget Arbor Day is tomorrow. Sanchez Park, 10 o'clock. We're gonna plant two trees as our Arbor Day celebration. Excuse me. Mayor's gonna give a speech. Thank you. So, with that, any questions?
I just want to tell you, I don't know if you meant to do this. Don't apologize for not mowing the dandelions, because I put this most lovely post on Facebook of all the beautiful dandelions. And they're gorgeous. They were beautiful. And, and I gave the city credit for being a, a green city and, and being the first bee food. And, because we, we want to keep the dandelions. And I can't tell you how many people and friends I had who live on the Front Range and in other places who were like, you know how long we've tried to get our city to do that? And they, you know, and many of them, so we got good recognition, whether we intended to or not. And I kind of think maybe we need to do that every year, and we can talk about that next spring. And whether you intended to do that or not, you got lots of kudos, and so did the city of Montevista for being a green city and providing bees with their first food by leaving the dandelions.
By plan.
Right? Right? So, no, and it was very good. Actually, in Vail, they have a whole dandelion festival. They, they don't cut their dandelions or mow anything till after June. They, they make dandelion wine, and they have this huge dandelion festival. And I thought, you know, that's kind of nice. So whether you intended to or not, you rock.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Good evening. So, first, I'm gonna start off with the audit, and what they, what Kyle spoke about, about the training. So I know in October, I believe Jenny and Diane are going to Vegas for Cassell Training. And I'm actually looking at a class in August in Utah to do more court training. I think there's this financial in mine's court, but, so that is in the plays of more training and the aspect that there, that Kyle had said that we need to do for the courts side of things. Jenny and I'll be working on those reports that Kyle had mentioned. So, we already do, I already send her reports. They just had noticed that there was a couple other reports that may be useful for Jenny to do the month ends. So that's something that Jenny and I'll be working on to get those reports activated. Last, the 7th of May was Court, Traffic Court Day. The judge was out due to a family emergency, so the traffic courts were handled by staff. I know I called Mike a lot and said, hey, you know, are you okay with me doing this, this, and this? And things worked out really well. We had pretty much everybody who was on the docket show up that day and either paid, or I had three that rescheduled to speak to the judge. So that went really well, and we'll resume court on the 21st of May. And on that, after court that day, myself and the judge and the city attorney are going to meet, and we're gonna be putting together an article for the courts and how we've come from two years ago to now. And we're also gonna do an open house for the courtroom. We had magistrate court for the first time this year with Judge Candelary out of Durango, and the, one of the US Marshals, who's the head of his security team, approached me, and we will be getting for free, they are going to be putting in a metal detector archway in the front of our courtroom. They said that they appreciated the fact that we have a courtroom now, and the security and the way it's set up was greatly appreciated. So their security team, for their purpose, will install that metal detector, but for the use of the city as well. So that was really good news on that. We have two new businesses coming into Montevista. Both of them are restaurants. One is over by Charisma, and the other one is at the old Java Dave's. Those should be opening within the matter of a couple weeks. The one over by Java Dave's is just waiting for his food handler's license. And then, so those are both restaurants that will be opening. Dog license, we've had a slew of dog licenses. Last year at this time, we only issued 65 dog licenses. We're already on our second bundle, so we're up to 102 dog licenses for this year. So, they're coming in, and everything's going really good with that. Now I'm gonna switch hats, and I'm gonna present some information on the Valley Three Theater. I sit on the Valley Three Theater Advisory Board. I am the vice chair. And we are getting ready to host our second annual Kids Carnival on June 1st. It'll be held downtown on Adams Street. We have tons of people who are getting involved. We have Papa Murphy's Pizza, who's gonna come up with their oven and do pizza for the kids. Stars and Strikes are doing hamburgers. I know we have the Connor Animal Shelter coming out. We have, we're gonna have games and bouncy houses and all kinds of stuff that's going on. The reason we did this on the June 1st weekend is, that's also the weekend of the dirt drags. It was mentioned, because we had been doing, for three years, we did a sock hop downtown, and it was kind of a, the owners out there, kind of a conflict saying, hey, you're driving, you know, you're bringing business away because we have the dirt drags down there. So, in return, we decided, instead of doing something for adults, we're turning it more for the kids. And it's gonna be from 1:00 to 5:00. So hopefully, you know, as they're done with their dirt drags, the parents can bring their kids into town and, and do the carnival. With that being said, the theater board is asking for the city if they would be a sponsor. We have three line items of sponsorship. We have a $25 game sponsorship, a $50 game sponsorship and logo, logo in our event advertising, or a $100 game sponsorship logo and merchandise distributed at the theater in future advertising. So the plan is, is that we are going to purchase T-shirts for staff and all volunteers that will have all of the logos or the people who sponsor the theater on the back of the T-shirts. So, as a theater, as the vice president of the theater board, we're asking if the city would be a sponsor for that as well. We know that the city does a lot for the theater, so it's, it was kind of a gray area if we come forward and ask for that or not. But we have, we all kind of divided the city up, and we have a group that's doing restaurants, a group that's doing banks. And since I'm here, I said that I would take on the city. And then, the other thing for the Valley Three Theater, we're doing really good. Our bank account is actually sitting at $40,000. And we're able to turn that and put money back into the community. And one of the other things that we're gonna have at the carnival is we have a DJ that's coming in. So there's gonna be live music. They're gonna do different contests and stuff for the kids, and it's all gonna be geared toward the kids.
Cool.
June 1st, from 1:00 till 5:00 on Adams Street. You'll have to vote if you want to do that, or if you don't want to do that. I mean, we're, we're totally fine with either way. It's just something that we had talked about and wanted to present to council.
We have a little left in our little discretionary budget, don't we? I, we have a little left. How much is in that? Just out of curiosity. Hate to put you on the spot.
No, that's okay. I gave the very-
I should know. I should know. Wasn't much, I don't think.
So you guys allotted three hundred dollars to share, as far as I can learn from these statements?
We did, we did one, and I can't-
Yeah, it hasn't been much.
-one to say was like three hundred.
Yeah, I think we got quite a lot.
I've got it written down.
Was it to the mobile kitchen, or, I can't remember. We did some-
Oh, yeah.
And just-
But we do have money.
Yeah, I do think you did three hundred, so I think it was about twenty-two.
And just so you know, the money that we are asking for donations from sponsors will go to the different games. We're doing door prizes. Hobby Town out of Valamosa has agreed to, we're gonna go in there and buy some door prizes, and they're gonna give it to us at cost. And so there's a lot of people involved in supporting this carnival, so.
I would like to do the hundred dollar donation.
I would too.
I-
We've got plenty, it's not like it's-
I will make a motion to donate a hundred dollars out of discretionary funds for the Kids Carnival.
Been moved and psyched to donate a thou- hundred dollars, excuse me?
You can donate a thousand.
For the Kids Carnival.
Is there any more discussion?
Counselor Ellathor?
Aye.
Counselor Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Thank you guys very much, and the theater board thanks you very much.
So I have a question on the city side, the city clerk.
Yes.
Do you know, or would Mike be able to say, the garden club members, how do they ask the judge for a helper? From, what do they have to do to ask for someone?
So now that you've said that, and I know that, whenever the judge will issue somebody a useful public service, we give her the number for the city, or them, the number for the city, and so when they contact the city for useful public service, we can give them-
So that lady right there needs a helper.
I will keep my eyes open for-
We need a helper out at Sky High Park. Somebody needs to be a really bad person, 'cause they need to clean the pigeon stuff out of the staircase. So it's somebody that really needs to be-
Okay.
Reprimanded is the word?
An awakening.
Recognized?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
So just for your information, please, my answer is a hundred percent. First you have a hundred dollars.
So, good.
IT.
Mr. Mayor, counsel.
Very nice to see you all this evening. Thank you, by the way, for renewing the contract. We feel that's very beneficial for both cities, and we really enjoy working with the city of Montevista, so thank you once again.
Thank you.
My, you have my written report before you tonight, a few highlights for you, maybe doesn't come across real great in this report. We recently were working with the city clerk to get some training on our current webpage and the management thereof through Civic Plus. During that timeframe, we found that they were asking for seven hundred dollars for a four-hour block of training. Didn't sound terrible. Then they sent us what they wanted us to train on. It was ten four-hour blocks at seven hundred dollars each.
Wow.
That spurred us into looking for a different website provider, and in that, at our SIPAD conference this year, which is the statewide internet portal authority, we were made aware of a free webs, a free content website opportunity for the city of Montevista, and possibly even the Montevista Golf Course. We are investigating that now. It looks like in August, we'll be able to redesign your website that will have training available at no cost, and update the entire website from the last generation of website at the same moment. As we looked into this more and more, we found that Civic Plus, the current website designer that the city engaged prior to us being here, had ownership of the city of Montevista.com domain name. That has been transferred back to the city. We have worked to get that done, so you now own that again, and it won't go away ever, as long as you pay the fees, which are minimal. But it was kinda odd in a way, they had set that up and assumed control of it. I just think that people don't think those things through when they're setting it up. You hire an outside company, the outside company says, "We can do everything for you." It's not necessarily in your best interest, so that has been corrected. IT really worked closely with your auditors. I have been in government IT for twenty years. I have never seen a more thorough IT audit be anywhere that I've worked. It was quite extensive, and for Kyle to give us a nod and tell us that things were in good shape really felt good, because it was quite the experience for us. One of the things that came out in that audit was the need for better security awareness training for all our employees. Our HR department here immediately jumped on that and has set that up. It's mandatory training, it's free training, because we're a source of city, online, so every employee from here on out, as they onboard, go through that security awareness training. So as we went through this audit, we learned a lot about ourselves, we learned a lot about the security of the city, and we're proud to say that we held the line very well for The next one, the small item on here, as you know, we recently updated all of the cellphones for the Public Works Department. Utilizing AT&amp;T's FirstNet program, we just upgraded the entire police department. So they now have preemptive priority service, modern cellphones, instead of something that was, quite frankly, already, in terms of cellphones, ancient. If we, we all remember flip phones, these weren't quite as bad as a flip phone, but they were down there, pretty far down the list. So, and when our previous vendor didn't wanna work with us, that's what made us reach out and use the buying power that we, of two cities. We were able to secure that chief ninety-nine cents a phone, I think, for a modern S9 cellphone with preemptive service for the entire police department. So, and short of that, just our normal patching and security that we do on a system constant. Fishing alerts, yes. Do you enjoy that one? So as always, we're ever vigilant on those security issues for the city. Any questions for me this evening?
Nope, I really appreciate you guys.
Thank you very much, Frank. Have a good day.
Oh, you're sort of all over. You're down to S.
Council committee, civic commissions, and council reports. We'll start on, yeah, into the table.
I think Chief covered it all.
Just be quiet.
I just have a couple of things. I attended the CERSA lunch as well, or the CERSA training, excuse me, for me, it was all food, and it was very good, whoever did that. The shelter is actually at capacity. I, if Patrick brings anyone out, we don't have room at the inn, and I'm not sure what, well, we're working on a transfer of dogs. We've got some, we've had some nice deposits lately of dogs that are not really adoptable, and you know some of those, chief. I will not be at the Arbor Day tomorrow. I've gotta take a truck and go meet another truck in Mossenburg for dog food. There's a place called The Pet Pantry, and they give us, they gather up all these open and torn bags of dog food and cat food from all over Denver, and they put 'em in the back of a truck, and I go meet them, and we do a parking lot trade-off, and it's free food for the shelter. So I'm not gonna be at the Arbor Day tomorrow, I'll be getting pet food. It's kitten season, please. Mike, your ordinance, I wanna comment on it, it's very good. The only thing I wish is that if the ordinance officer brings a cat out to the shelter or a kitten, we do like we did with, do with the dogs, if we return it, it has to be spayed or neutered, which would be a really nice addition, and I don't know, you might've changed that. That's the only thing I would add, and I'm not sure, I do have to say again, along with our dandelion production, we are pretty avant-garde with the cat ordinance. Not a lot of cities have really good cat ordinances, or have even attempted to do anything like that, so yay, city of Montevista. I don't know what other cat ordinances do look like, but yours is a lot like the dogs. You know, keep them at home, and if they're picked up, they'll come out to the shelter, or if they don't have a tag and we can't, they can't be returned home, and then we can keep them for five days, after which we can adopt them to someone, or more than likely, we would send them up to a no-kill shelter on the Front Range somewhere, which is what we do with the dogs when we get overloaded too. We have several other shelters that we work with. So your cat ordinance is great, and the only thing I saw that I would wish was different was the spay and neuter capability, and that might be actually more of a shelter policy than a, an ordinance policy. Yeah, and it probably is actually more of a shelter policy. And I can't think of anything else other than that. Victor?
On you, buddy.
I really don't have a whole lot. I like the, you know, the kids in the 4-H program, and, you know, the discount that we gave them, I think is substantial, and I think it will benefit the whole community, not just Montevista, but the whole valley, basically. I know, take some time to invest in the kids, you know, I think that's, that's our future, and I think they're important, so.
I don't have a whole lot, other than definitely wanna be at the Arbor Day tomorrow, ten o'clock, Sanchez Park. And also, it was sent to Mayor and the Montevista City Council, that the Montevista United Methodist Church is having their one-hundred-and-thirty-fifth church anniversary, celebrating one-hundred-and-thirty-five years walking by faith. So it's Sunday, July fourteenth, twenty nineteen, eleven AM worship service, twelve fifteen PM dinner, and they invited all of us. They said we didn't have to go to the worship service, but they would like for us all to show up for dinner. And the dinner, we got a RSVP for the dinner by July first. You can call Colette's Gaff, so if, of course, more than one of us shows up, then, or two of us.
I will get that posted, and then if you'd like, if you wanna, just let me know if you're gonna attend, and I will go ahead and do just one RSVP.
Okay. Well, I will, so. And then the youth, that's big this time of year, it's like Chief said, it's warming up. They're, what's that?
Defrosting.
Defrosting, yeah. It, and it's, there's a lot more youth out, so be cautious, careful driving down the streets. I've seen some little bitty burgers out running around on the street that shouldn't be in the street, but they were there, so everybody needs to be cautious of, there's surroundings at all times, and as well as it's warming up, and there's some new faces in the area that I'm quite concerned about, so be diligent. As Mike said, pay attention, don't be afraid to call it in. So with that, we will adjourn the meeting until June sixth.